Okay, why don't we get started? Please, thank you. We've got one more Department Day. Ms. Hess, please, thank you and your staff, thank you for your patience in hanging in there. Please identify yourself. We have your written testimony, whatever remarks you'd like to make, and then whatever questions we have. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening now, right? Good evening, Councilwoman Greenlee, and members of City Council who are hanging in there with us, so thank you so much. I am Sheila Hess, and I am just so humbled to be the City Representative. And joining me here today are my colleagues, First Deputy City Representative Margaret Hughes and our Deputy City Representative Elka Badal Murillo. And I am pleased to provide testimony on the Office of City Representatives' Fiscal Year 2018 operating budget. And so, the mission of the Office of City Representative, we are to promote and market Philadelphia as a world-class destination for our tourists, our visitors, and businesses, and work to improve the residents' quality of life. The City Representatives, we attend civic, business, public events on behalf of the Mayor. We are liaison with the international delegations to promote the city for business and leisure. The office also produces special events. We create and provide ceremonial documents. We provide the gifts of recognition and honor dignitaries. So, our plans for the fiscal year 2018, the Office of City Representative, we refer ourselves to OCR, excels at building strategic partnerships with all various city departments and even nonprofits to increase the outcomes and sources of our combined work. So, one example is a very, very strong partnership we have with Welcome America, Inc., and that is to support the Fourth of July Festival at the events and to produce the iconic July Fourth Celebration of Freedoms Ceremony. This year, it is the 25th anniversary. We will be bringing back a naturalization ceremony, which is quite special. The partnership also includes co-producing the Philly Holiday Festival. And new in 2016 was the Philly Holiday Tree Lighting Celebration with a fantastic base, all free of charge to the public and family-friendly events. So, in fiscal '18, the OCR assumes complete responsibility, new this year, for the ceremonial flag raisins held outside of City Hall or indoors to celebrate the many immigrant populations of our city and promote Philadelphia as a welcoming city. Approximately 40 ceremonial international flag raisins and receptions are scheduled during this year fiscal year '18, and that is in close collaboration with the Office of Immigrant Affairs. And that is going to help the city as a global destination and a place of choice for new residents, and most importantly, as a first-world heritage city in the United States. In the third quarter fiscal year '17, OCR was transitioning the Philadelphia Marathon to the Managing Directors' Office, which will produce the annual event within a series of various city-running events. This shift will then now enable the Office of City Representative to fully absorb the new flag raising calendar, as well as producing new innovative events, such as the Philadelphia Commission for Women's State of Women and Girls Summit, that was just held on Friday and was a great success. And we want to thank Councilman Blondell Reynolds and Sanchez, who were very instrumental in making that happen. We also partnered, obviously, with the Office of Public Engagement to make that event what it was. So, an emphasis on reaching more neighborhood residents and immigrants is a key goal for the OCR and the new events under consideration. And with further in our efforts to impact the city's diverse neighborhoods and all the communities, OCR will again partner with Parks and Rec and the Office of Immigrant Affairs to help produce the second annual Philadelphia International Unity Cup as it expands. OCR will produce the Festival of Nations, and that was a fantastic event we received where we welcomed the teams and the soccer fans to a championship game in November, and we coordinated all the on-field activities with a parade, representing the different populations and acknowledging the teams and their heritages. Other international efforts, OCR works closely with the Department of Commerce and also with the Citizen Diplomacy International, and that is where we're able to host international dignitaries and diplomatic envoys attracted to business opportunities and cultural exchanges within the city of Philadelphia. The City Reps Office effectively and successfully serves in an ambassadorial role on behalf of the Mayor and the citizens of Philadelphia, ensuring that travel and dignitaries, heads of states, and international business representatives are met with proper protocols and with all due honor and respect. And this aligns with our OCR strategy of promoting and marketing our city in the best light possible, since these international delegations are influential in bringing more visitors to Philadelphia and engaging more directly in business opportunities right here. So, our office will continue to identify events that have the potential to boost the local economy, improve economic opportunities for Philadelphians, and an emphasis on promoting Philadelphia's hospitality and tourism industry. Now, that is a growth of hospitality and tourism sector that will enable job creation, jobs that often start at an entry level that residents without a high school diploma can access and even gain family-sustaining wages. The City Reps Office serves, I serve on five boards currently, whose organizational mission are tied to tourism and hospitality, and that's just another vehicle for ensuring that the city supports this growing and robust sector. So, at the community level, a strategic goal for OCR's work is engaging communities in the production of diverse events that may serve as neighborhood marketing tools and promote the commercial carters. These efforts will also help support similar Commerce Department efforts to increase the economic vibrancy of our neighborhood commercial areas. And related to those efforts is a central role that City Rep Office is serving as Mayor Kenny's representative to the community at large, carrying the administration's principles of inclusion, service, and collaboration to achieve the highest-quality outcome and experiences for both our residents and our visitors. In event production, OCR will enhance and expand its existing roster, including a variety of signature annual events, such as our recent Pal Day at City Hall. We had our recent St. Patrick's Day Wear Green, Give Green. We have our upcoming this month, our Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day, and the Police and Fire Living Flame Memorial Service, and the Mayor's Centenarian Celebration in May. And we can't forget our pre-K move-out with the Mayor's Office Education Partnership in June. So, OCR will continue to grow. We're going to support the existing internal and external partnerships, such as our great relationship with the United Negro College Fund, where we worked with their event for the Mayor's Mass Ball, the Subaru Cherry Blossom Festival that will take place tomorrow as a press conference, and partnering with the Office of Creative Arts and Culture with the Philadelphia's Philly Celebrates Jazz Event. Another goal of OCR this year is to increase its outreach to more diverse audiences and to continue connecting with our residents, nonprofit organizations, businesses, city departments, and other entities through its longstanding communications program, especially in creating mayoral ceremony documents that acknowledge national observances, outstanding public service, and organization accomplishments, as well as provide the gifts of recognition, enhance business attraction, and serve to promote the city. All of our events produce our plan to present a low impact to city services, and obviously done with the most efficient and effective process to reduce costs. The core work of the department will be enhanced this year, as a new strategic plan will soon be developed with our colleagues that are here today through the assistance of the Office of Performance Management. OCR expects this process to provide staff with a valuable tool for our goals, our direction, and strategy, in ensuring that our department expands its capacity to fulfill the mission of promoting the city and serving our residents and visitors. We continue to be visible, engaged, and connect, and build those relationships. We look forward to working with each of you in council in the year ahead to find new ways to enhance the positive experiences here in the city of Philadelphia among our residents and your constituents, have in our city, to grow opportunities for our shared prosperity and fun events. We are honored to hear your thoughts and responses to the OCR plans for the coming fiscal year, and we thank you so much for your time, support, and all that you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Thank you for all you and your office does. Just very quickly, you talked about a little bit, I don't know if you said anything exact, though, about the net economic benefit of what your office does. Is there any actual or approximate figure that you can?
There isn't an approximate figure, but we work extremely closely with the Philadelphia Convention Visitors Bureau and Visit Philadelphia, where we see the increase in the hotels and the numbers from the restaurants and businesses and shops for businesses, you know, for attire or whatever the case may be, and merchandise, but I do not have an exact number.
Okay.
But it has increased, that's all I know. It has definitely increased.
Well, that sounds good, yeah. The events on the Parkway, you mentioned Welcome America, but the rest of, like I say, Made in America, the NFL Draft that's coming, that's not under your office, that's under Office Special Events, I believe?
Well, that, it depends. So, the Wawa Welcome America is actually a separate entity. It's a private entity. They are a nonprofit where it is head by Jeff Garasino, the President and CEO. So, that previously and several years ago was housed under our office, but now we work extremely closely with Jeff and his team and still provide several roles and responsibilities for certain events from that program. The NFL Draft is actually produced by PCVB, the PHL Sports, it used to be Sports Congress, but they work very closely with the Office of Special Events from the logistics and permitting and everything that needs to be set up, so they do work with them, yes.
Kind of combo thing, huh?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, very good. Thank you. A whole lot of people want to ask questions. Maybe they all have nice things to say, I don't know. Councilman Jones.
Nice things to say.
Okay.
Bringing to our neighborhoods, Wawa Welcome America. We had an event sponsored by you guys at Tustin Playground, which hundreds and hundreds of kids, hundreds and hundreds of adults appreciated because all of the activity here before was in your district, your ward.
There was nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that.
That was a good idea, actually.
It's nice to see some of those center-city activities out there.
It was a great movie night.
Yeah, it was a great movie.
It was a great movie night. Lots of energy there.
Yeah. So, I forget what the movie was, but it was nice. So, a couple of questions. You increased Class 200 by 200 something thousand, and it's to offset something or other that I wasn't really clear about.
Yes, that was actually a grant that was awarded to a nonprofit. Yeah. I'll pass this one on to Margaret, who's working with our nonprofit.
Good evening, Margaret Hughes. That was a grant that, or a contract, rather, professional class, as you noted, Class 250, that had previously for many years prior to, several administrations ago, it got started to a nonprofit that helps promote tourism efforts in Old City. And for whatever reason, in fiscal 2017, which is right now, that was removed from our budget and was replaced through another mechanism through, I believe, the Budget Office handled it. But then they put it back on our budget for this coming fiscal, so that's a direct, it's nothing really very new.
So, you guys lost a couple of employees. I do know we're one of them. But what is your complement of staff now?
Our total staff now? It's currently eight, but there's two open positions that we're currently working with human resources to fill.
You're going to fill those? And the reason I ask that is because I kind of have an insight to some of your world on working with others, but there is an important role you guys play, and I'm hoping that that role expands. I know Melanie had this position in the Nutter Administration where she went out and recruited events, and I actually believe that is a valuable function for the City Reps Office to do. So, if it's the Walapalooza Festival in Mississippi, you need to go and find how can we recruit that or aspect like it to Philadelphia. And we are beginning to be recognized internationally, nationally, but you're the face of it and the welcoming face of it, so that we can kind of get more people doing that. That's my first observation. My second observation is, and this doesn't just deal with you, it deals with all of our departments, we don't know what we're worth. When Channel 6, Channel 10, Comcast goes out and gets an event, they know exactly what a commercial is worth, and so therefore, they're able to charge, you're going to see, you're going to be before 50,000 marching folk, and their average income is X, and therefore, we're going to charge you Y for a commercial. What we have to get better in our formula is how much being in front of 250,000 people screaming on the Fourth of July is really worth to the sponsors, who then pass that cost on to the advertisers. If we could drill down on that, I think we can get, I think we can be respected with people putting their money where their mouth is, but also get more revenue to do more things, to expand our brand, if you would. That's just my observation.
I am so on board in this same. Thank you, Councilman Jones, for bringing that to our attention. We are like all eyes and ears for the city as well, constantly benchmarking and constantly looking to see what other events, but we have to make sure that those events may work in another city, but here in the culture, no one who our audience is, but we want to make sure that we'll also attract new people as well. But we need to be conscious right now, you know, knowing that the city services and security costs right now is at a very, very high level, so we need to be conscious of that as well.
We've got to know what we're worth.
So, but yes, thank you. We will be bringing new things to the city.
All right. It's Walapalooza.
I like that.
Noted, duly noted.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Talbomberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A comment from me, Ms. Hess, I really just want to say thank you to your staff and yourself, because you really do a great work, and I just want to note it from this councilman and from my perspective, you're doing a fantastic job. And you can always do better, and I guess that's something you have to review yourself. But as I see it, working at the Unity Cup, that's a soccer game that the Mayor started, Soccer Games, soccer event, I think can eventually be on track to be known throughout the nation and maybe even the world.
We want it to be replicated, for sure.
And you do, it's just a wonderful job, bringing ethnic communities together and those that love soccer. I've had an opportunity to see several games. I was not there for the final game because of a conflict, but I was there for the event that led up to the final game, and I thought that gave it a little international flair, a little culinary delight, and also to allow the ethnic groups to show off their culture, their dance, and so on. And I think it's fantastic. Also, travelers, when they come to the city of Philadelphia, we just recently had a group in from China with the arts, and of course, our sister city in China as well was well-represented. Once again, your office, I think, really stepped up and helped a great deal. I am also very involved in Frankfurt, Germany's sister-city relationship, and that's something those that live in Frankfurt, or those are called Frankfurters, are very excited about with another delegation coming here. But once again, your office has been very, very helpful. You are really the person that decorates the front door of the city of Philadelphia when you come and set the tone. And even though it might not have anything directly in the budget that shows, but if we get one company from Europe to really make a major investment in the city of Philadelphia, that pays for your office for many, many years. So, I think we're working on that. I think it has been done in the past, and I look forward to, in my time in council, working with your office to make things even better.
Thank you so much for your kind words, and we also enjoy, as you know, working with you, Councilman Talbomberger, and your entire team. You're so supportive in everything that we do, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and we're there for you, and thank you again. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I acknowledge you are the biggest soccer fan here in the City Council, so.
I've played many years. We should put you together.
I don't know about that. Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you. I also want to thank the entire team, and I know that you've really gone out of your way to promote some of these flag raising and some of these other events, and as you know, this means a whole lots of people, and it's important. It's not just a symbolic event. I just wanted to kind of add that in the previous administration, the last few years, we struggled a little bit about ensuring that some of the mainstream activities were diverse, diverse in their programming and their band selection. Philadelphia broke the record in the Parkway for the largest number of people dancing salsa. All of that has been removed from some of those events, and so, you know, I want to offer up our office to kind of work with you on some of those things, but I think that.
Thank you.
That was some of the events, that kind of diversity on those mainstream events, so whether it was the Fourth of July, you know, some of the other events, we've lost the ability to influence that and have that kind of diversity out there. So, let me encourage you to be mindful as you're planning some of the events in the upcoming.
Yes, we are fully focused, thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez, on that initiative this year, especially being the new role that we're taking, working extremely closely with the Office of Immigrant Affairs. But everything that we do is diversity, and including being that I was born with a disability, including a lot more things as well with, I know the earlier conversation was the disabled community, so we're talking true diversity in every factor with all that we do this year. So, I will be calling on your team to support and help us maybe be on a committee, so thank you.
Yeah, we'd love to help. We did in the past, and then over the last few years, it just kind of has dropped off, and people have asked me. It's like, oh, we used to have, you know, a stage that had, you know, multiculturalism and some other stuff, and just whatever we can do to be helpful in that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Thank you all for what you do. I would like to mention, are we okay for the 13th and 14th with regard to gifts for the Vice President of Liberia?
We will be, yes.
Thank you. And then, on the 27th and 28th, we have Sierra Leone and Togo here to try to make sure we do their flag. Thank you. We have been, as all of you know, we have the Mayor's Commission on African Equivalve Immigrant Affairs and Echos. Echos was established in 2000, and the Mayor's Commission 12 years ago. And we've still been trying to get flags, we've been writing since 2015, and we're still trying to get flags on the Parkway for Sierra Leone and Tegwabar Buda, Democratic Republic of Congo, and Trinidad and Tobago. So, we're asking if you would work with us to try to get our flags.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. I've become a flag connoisseur lately in my new role. I've learned the history of how the flags on the Parkway were started, and I know there are a total of 195 countries in the world today, and 193 of those are member states of the United Nations. But there's currently 109 flags on the Parkway, and they're in alphabetical order except for three, and the three, there's a reason why, and one, I have all that history, like I said, the knowledge I've gained. But right now, with the Parkway under construction and the cost of the poles to install and determining out of the total of 195 countries which ones get added, so as our office receive requests, we've been tracking them in a database of like, and then we're also tracking to see how many of those flag, the countries are duplicates more and more, so we have a waiting list of flags. We'll be working with public property as well, but we want to put together a cross-sector of city and public and private folks to put together a task force to talk about this initiative. This is very, very important, and this is actually an identity of the city of Philadelphia, the beautiful Parkway with the, you know, the diversity represented in the flag, so I would love to have someone from your office to be part of our committee, to be part of this planning for next phases.
Yeah, absolutely. We think it's so important, and we thought we'd change them a couple times a year, and I think it makes Philadelphia a special place when countries can look up and when they are here and when they come here and celebrate, that they can see their flag on the Parkway. So, I've been telling them each time, we've been writing at least since 2015, and I tell, it's coming, it's coming. So, we hope that.
If you can find space on the Parkway, we can make it happen.
Well, I'm willing to, I don't, it doesn't bother me if we start new space, so I don't care if we get to the museum in turn, but I think that we should, because how can you say one country's better than another?
We completely agree.
We ourselves represent 35 countries in Africa and more, and more in Caribbean, and so we are happy to do whatever it takes to support you, to support initiatives, to come up with ideas that you think, if you want us to suggest, where we think they may be. But I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's important that everybody feel there, feels that they're as important as the next guy. And so, but we're happy to be supportive in any way, and we're happy to include someone on that commission.
Terrific.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman Greenley. Although I do take some exception to the statement that Councilman Talbomberger is the number-one football fan here in City Council. He likes Bundesliga, where I like Barclays Premier League, but that's a separate question for another day.
Okay, all right.
So, thank you for your testimony. I just had a question I wanted to follow up with you regarding a conversation I had with Merrill Levitts last week. There are a number of initiatives that you're involved in, as well as Visit Philadelphia and Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding hospitality and tourism. However, on the business side, the Commerce Department, as well as Select Philadelphia and the Chamber of Commerce are engaged in business attraction activities. But from my perspective, from what I've seen over the years, it really hasn't been a combination of both hospitality and business attraction, and I'm not sure if both sides know what other sides are doing. They may know from an anecdotal perspective, but not from a, okay, this is an issue that we're working on versus an issue that they're working on. So, one of the ideas that we had is trying to put together, we'll loosely call it a City Attraction Summit, which is a, is a meeting between the various entities within the region that do attraction activities, either on the hospitality or tourism side, as well as on the business side. I just want to get some perspective, that's something you may be interested in, that at least having a meeting where we can bring these different entities together, so we can at least share information, so people know what's going on from a both hospitality, tourism, and business attraction perspective.
Thank you, Councilman Green. I think that is a terrific idea. In my previous role prior to City Representative, I was on the board for the Chamber of Commerce, so I was very actively engaged in talking to businesses who were thinking of coming to Philadelphia and trying to get them to come here. So, to tie it in with business attraction, tourism, and hospitality, I just think is brilliant. It's like a trifecta there, and I think that is something that, with my background and my knowledge, and our close working relationship with Commerce and their team, and Matt Cabbrey from Select Philadelphia, I think we can start that going now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll give you the biggest college basketball fan in here, huh? Okay, how's that? All right? You take that one?
Cavaliers will win.
Oh, okay, okay. Cavaliers, okay, all right. Oh, Virginia Cavaliers, very good, okay. All right, is there, is there any other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Hess, all of you, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your long patience that you had here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, you too. This committee will stand in recess until Wednesday, April 5, 2017, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene right here in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you. No, we don't have to.